Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the special workshop of the Newbury Planning Board. We're here to talk about our department and planning board goals. I just want to remind all the members that this is being taped for future broadcasts. And I'm Larry Murphy, the chair. To my left, we have...
Pete Pecos.
Mary Stone.
And to my right...
Steve Ranjan.
Scott Kinter.
And...
Woody Knight.
Woody. And welcome, Steve, to your first meeting as an associate member.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to say a word for the benefit of any members of the public who might be watching this at some later date. We're going to be talking about our fiscal year goals. And the departmental goals are organized around the fiscal year. Every fiscal year runs from July 1 to June 30. So if you hear us talking about fiscal year '23 or FY '23, that's for the 12-month period that ends June 30. Likewise, fiscal year '24 will end at the end of June of this year, and fiscal year[68.84][68.84]'25 will pick up July 1. So what I anticipated this morning is just a more or less informal discussion between Martha, Kristen, and the board members about where we've been so far with our goals and where we're going in the future. So I'd encourage anyone to, if you have any questions as we go, just jump in. Again, it's a very informal meeting. So might as well, why don't I turn it over to you?
Sure. So just as a little bit of background, as Larry said, we work on a fiscal year basis. And last year was the first year that we worked with the Collins Center on a new budgeting format, which included the document that you have in front of you. And that includes a mission statement for both the board and departmental activities, a brief description of the planning board responsibilities, and then the planning department's responsibilities, insofar as there are some things that the planning department does that are not strictly the planning board related. And then on the second page, there are accomplishments from fiscal year '23. And then last year, we developed a list of goals for fiscal year '24. So those are still listed here. And the very last item in each of each of these goals is a status update of where we stand at present with those goals. Some were accomplished, some weren't started, some are still in process. And then the third set is the fiscal '25 goals. And these, again, you know, were kind of generated by us staff based on things that we're working on and things that, you know, we know that the board also is interested in. So what we're hoping to do today is, you know, get any questions from you all and any thoughts on other things that you might want to, you know, accomplish as a board that hasn't, you know, haven't been listed here.
Martha, I have a question on your organizational chart. Don't you have some oversight over the ZBTA functions as well?
Some. It's a little loose. But yeah, I've been filling that role as well.
So anything you would want to add to your organizational chart?
Yeah, I think that's something probably a discussion I had with Tracy as to, but this is what was given to us this year. So I didn't think any...
Oh, you didn't...
I didn't create that.
You didn't create that?
No, no, that came to us.
Can you elaborate on the conservation agent? I was certainly part of inspectional services.
Well, there's some, you know, there's overlap. So they're considered part of inspectional services really in terms of Chrissy provides administrative support for both the building commissioner and for our conservation agent. But technically, the conservation function is kind of, it's a little confusing. So I have some oversight, but they're in inspectional services and the agent also reports to Tracy. So there's, you know, some overlap.
Brittany Chiefs. Thank you.
Yeah, like when you're on a check note, like a subdivision or like a Green Street or something, you usually go with the conservation agent and Joe.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And sometimes Peter, building inspector, as well, you know, depending on what the issue is.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, just say Green Street, but any of them.
Yeah, that's, yeah, but that's a good example.
Yeah.
In the FY '24 goal updates, the goal number one of them having to do with MBTA communities, Martha, I don't recognize under the measurement that acronym 3A TA. What is that?
So that's actually what Ian and Kayla have been providing to us. It's the acronym for 3A, which is the, you know, the master plan.
Oh, I got it now. 3A Technical Assistance.
Assistance, yes.
Okay, okay. In goal number two of FY '24, I know that's a huge project. That's ongoing review of the zoning bylaws in town council.
Yes.
And I think that'll probably be carried over to FY '25.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. We started it and we worked on the administrative portions, but have not gotten into it.
So you're looking at the next year, town meeting in a year from now?
A year from now, yeah, yeah.
Has the board been involved in those discussions in the past? Larry was their representative?
Yeah. So it's been kind of a small working group with town council, Larry and Pete have attended, Eric Swan and Peter Bennett, to kind of get it to a certain point.
Yeah. Is that how you envision it continuing?
I would imagine that would be the case. You know, that was a suggestion from town council, actually, to form a working group, which could then bring it to the greater group. The select board.
So number five on the housing production plan, you feel confident that can be completed by the end of the fiscal year?
That is the, that's the goal. We talked with Lauren at MVPC about that yesterday. So the next steps would be to review the strategies. And then she's also pulling together, pulling together the whole plan that she's targeting at the end of the fiscal year for adoption. So it needs to be adopted both by the planning board and by the select board.
And that does what for us? It makes us eligible for state grants?
It provides a plan for us to follow and develop in housing. We can also, if we develop a certain amount of housing in any given year, it also provides a safe harbor for us for a 40B application if we get one for either one or two years, depending on how much housing we develop.
Yeah, that was a good meeting, didn't it, by the way?
Yeah, I thought that worked really well. Thank you.
Can I go back just for a second?
Sure.
So let's talk about, what's our thought on implementation plan, implementation work design? I think a work group, something.
You're talking about for the master plan?
Right, for the master plan, yeah, the goal number four. Sorry, what's our thought there, what that would look like?
I know what my thoughts are, but I don't know if, you know, I think ultimately it's really up to the select board. My feeling is that it would be an advisory committee consisting of, you know, planning staff, planning board members, select board members, FinCon, capital planning, and interested residents. And then there'd be other, you know, other people who would get involved, whether it's conservation or, you know, building commissioner or DPW for certain...
So advisory?
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, don't you think?
I think so. It's purely advisory. There is, I understand, a question as to whether or not the select board members and the FinCon members could sit on this because of the certain provisions in the administrator bylaw. But that's something we're trying to work through.
Is that something we'd ask town council or...
Yeah, so at some point, they, the administr... I don't know if I'm phrasing this correctly. There's a town administrator bylaw.
Town Administrator Act.
Yeah, okay, thank you. It prohibits the select board members and FinCon members from sitting in any other board or committee. So the question is, does that extend to things like a purely advisory group or not? And that's something town council definitely, you know?
Is that advise, is one of your, time out advisory, advisory of the select board or to town meeting? Who lists that committee advisory to?
To the select board, I would think, because they're the ones with the real authority. I would think so, wouldn't you, yeah?
That would make no sense.
Right. What do you say to the select board has their thoughts?
No, we haven't discussed it with the select board yet. And some of them that we are considering getting on their agenda sometime soon to have that discussion. So those are just my thoughts on how, you know, it seems, what seems to make sense from my perspective.
No, I agree with you.
Do you think that the implementation committee advisory board, whatever is the right phrase for it, would also come back to the planning board for advice, recommendations before they went to the select board or...
Certainly no reason why not.
Right.
You know? But the real, I mean, our, at this, and correct me if you disagree, Martha, but at this point, our role is largely advisory. You know, we've done what we had to do, what we were required to do by statute to develop the master plan. You know, the real authority, I think, was following through it, that would be with the select board.
Yeah, and I think it might depend on what, you know, what the particular item was in the implementation plan. There are different, you know, different parties that are responsible for certain sorts of things. So, you know, ideally, anything that has the planning board or planning staff next to it would be, you know, discussed among the planning board members, but there might be other things like DPW responsibility that wouldn't necessarily...
Yeah, we wouldn't like, yeah, we can sculpt them, I suppose, but, but I forget, I counted out how many, how many others?
I think 72.
72. Goals assigned to the planning board or the planning board.
Right, right.
So it's an ambitious list.
It is an ambitious list. And I would anticipate that, you know, planning staff would play a large role in, you know, sort of coordination.
Prioritizing, sure.
You betcha.
Just trim it down a tad.
No, we have to prioritize within that group, obviously.
Right. And I think when we were going through the master plan development with Emily, that was, we had a lot of discussions about that. But that's probably one of the first things that the implementation committee will need to do is actually develop a list of priorities because it is, there are a lot of things in there. And some of the priorities are identified and other ones were specifically left for the implementation committee to address because that could change given, you know, circumstances in the town or whatever, something might run to a higher priority or something might be determined not to be quite so.
Martha, back to goal number five on the production plan. We have a production plan, right? And that was developed when?
We have one that was developed in 2017, 2018. It's dated 2018 to 2023. So that one's actually expired. So Mayor Macaulay Planning Commission is now working upon a new regional plan for all the 15 communities, including individual production plans for each of the communities. So this will be, you know, 24 to 20, it's a five-year lifespan, so 24 to 29.
So every five years, we need to update?
Update, yeah.
And if we don't update, we're just out of that safe harbor or what are the, what could be the impacts to that?
We don't, we don't have the possibility of using it as a safe harbor. Again, that depends also on our housing production. I honestly don't know. Do you know, is it tied to any grant opportunities because housing?
Probably. I don't, I don't know explicitly if there are grants. The community one stop is the, like, overall state, you know, portal for all sorts of community development kinds of grants. I don't know, there may be that some of those have, like, do you have an active housing production plan? I don't know that it's like you aren't eligible if you don't have it, but I do think you, it's something they look at and give, they could probably give you points.
Or bonus points.
To be more prioritized in terms of your application. It does, HPP has, similar to an open space recreation plan, it has a very particular structure that the state requires and then they have to approve it. So it gets adopted by the town and then it gets submitted to HLC now, used to be HCD. And then they'll say, yes, you're, you're accepted, and then the five years kicks in. So it's, I mean, I think it's rare that having an active HPP has really helped with the safe harbor question. It's more a tool, from my perspective, it's more a tool for a community to actually think through, you know, housing needs and think through strategies to address, you know, goals and sort of have a roadmap. And the state is, like, asking towns to have that roadmap and then to actually, you know, implement things. But it's not, I haven't seen towns face, you know, enormous, like, problems if your plan is not updated for a year.
We do, yeah. And I think the last one we did was really the first one that we ever had, so. And we're fortunate in the sense that we've had a lot of things sort of happening simultaneously. One was, you know, finishing up the master plan and the housing goals and that, and then working on the housing production plan, and then also doing the MBTA communities at the same time, because all of this has really, you know, created a big focus on housing.
Yeah, everywhere.
Yeah.
All over the country.
And do you think there's a benefit, you know, us being aligned with the regional plan? I'd be interested to see, you know, 14 communities to get everybody in alignment on, you know, what their goals would be with the housing.
Yeah, so it's actually, the plans aren't necessarily in alignment for each community in terms of the housing goals. So what the regional plan does, it really sets the regional context, the regional demographics, sort of what the trends are throughout the region within that plan. Each, each town's plan is very specific to that town with our own goals, our own strategies, you know, based on our own, our own circumstances and demographics and stuff. So, you know, the region is the umbrella and that, that kind of sets, you know, sets the context for greater picture. But we're not, you know, our goals are not Lawrence's goals. We're very different communities, so.
Do you have any...
It also sets the mandates. The overarching plan gives mandates that you have, you have to match, you have to reach to get, to get funding and to not be penalized by the state for not doing certain things, right?
Yeah, I mean, the process, and it does tie back to the 40B and the safe harbor that we were just talking about. I don't think there's anything in the plan itself that really is considered a mandate.
Okay.
These are all, you know, goals and actions, things that, strategies that we as a community feel would be, you know, beneficial and appropriate for us to increase our amount and diversity of housing.
Right.
Of course.
Do you have any sense of how many of the member communities actually have a current housing production plan?
I think all of them do. I can't remember, I think MVPC might have been tracking one or two of the communities separately from us, but I don't, I don't remember.
I think, I mean, I think most of the towns in the MVPC region did it with MVPC at the same time Newbury did five years ago. So most of them are right where we are.
Probably in the same cycle, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think they're doing all of us except for maybe one community right now that was tracking separately, but, and we were, as far as I know, we were actually, ours was actually the first regional plan that had been done in the state. So it was really quite exciting going through that process the first time.
Well, MVPC certainly is a wonderful resource.
They are. I can't say enough good stuff about them.
No, amazing.
They have, they have amazingly smart, energetic staff.
They're organized.
And very, you know, dedicated to the region.
Every money, every meeting is productive. Things get done, things get accomplished. So it's impressive.
Could you, maybe just, could you give us an example of how the, having the housing protection plan, you know, protect us with safe harbor, you know, from 40B?
So I can't remember exactly the provisions of, there's a percentage if, if you have a housing production plan and then you create, I can't remember exactly, it's like point, you know, point five of your housing stock or something in increase. If you have a 40B application, you can actually sort of delay it for a year. And if it's agreed, it's like, it's either point oh five and point one or something. Sorry, I don't remember exactly. It's a one or two-year delay that you're, you know, you're safe from having to actually...
Which the delay would, you know, help the town understand the impacts, right? To, or a large, you know, multifamily housing deal, you know, could present to the town.
Right, and it also allows us to, you know, perhaps do, you know, do things on our own to help increase the housing.
Got it, thank you. Okay, well, I'm encouraged and that we can look forward to, please get your head done by the end of the fiscal year.
Yes.
Check that box, anyway.
Yes.
So good to see consistency of calling it affordable housing. You know, affordable housing as opposed to any other 40B or subsidized or, you know, another kind. This is, this is understandable to everybody.
Well, this was interesting because at the housing production meeting, Lynn, was it Lynn?
Lauren.
Lauren made that statement. She said, you know, what type of affordable are we talking about? Are we talking about just the standard where we have this number associated with it? Were we talking about somebody that's affordable, somebody that's on a limited income? Which brings conversation, if you don't mind, to, you know, really trying to, you know, promote something that's in our bylaws that really, you know, I think is a gem. You know, we have this accessory dwelling bylaw and, man, I just, you know, I wish we could just push it, promote it, every opportunity that we can for any type of, you know, small development, you know?
Right.
You know, just, hey, you know, make a little something here, do a little something there. Maybe I'm thinking of it now, but in 40 years from now, you might need a place to step down, your kids are going to need a place to step in. Kind of like the triple deckers that used to be, you know, the R.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that's, you know, grandma lives on this floor, you, they live on the floor and the great-grandma lives down here, you know?
I think...
Getting that mentality back, right?
Yeah, and I think one of the things that is most likely will be a strategy in the housing production plan, I'm sure was, also was previously, but is like focusing that outreach and education in a, in a strategic way. So what are the ways? Because we got a public comment the other day, just by email, I did an accessory unit on my property. It's, it's great. My parents, you know, my in-laws are living there now, I'm going to be living there in 15 years. Tell that story. Like, are we doing, you know, press releases? Are we doing enough, you know, direct outreach to individual homeowners? Like, what are the ways that a town can kind of step that, like, elevate the conversation?
Absolutely. I mean, working with our council on aging, right? If we had a mechanism, a tool where, you know, an elder came in to say, hey, listen, I'm in this process, I don't know what I want to do, I can't keep up my house, you know, the, well, listen, the town has this and we had a mechanism to facilitate that or help facilitate that.
Yeah.
But, you know, not only do the whole equation, you have a whole cookbook, but, you know, stop the process to, you know, say, there's an option here, we have resources that can help you with that. I think implementing a program like that, a true outreach program with planning and our council on aging, I mean, because we have, we're an aging, we're an aging community and we have land, okay? So we have a primary structure that can easily do a secondary structure.
And that's one of the things that I think would be good to look at in our accessory apartment bylaws is the, you know, this square footage, you know, the lot size requirements, because I think they could still be shrunk down and it might enable more people to develop ADUs. I know a lot of properties that are, that are very small, you know, below 40,000 square feet. They're legal non-conforming properties with a barn or an ADU, you know, accessory apartment would be great, but right now it's not allowed.
So is that a limitation of 40,000 square feet?
So it's 40,000 square feet and for, one of the tags...
So just a clarification, 40,000 square feet is an acre?
Just an acre.
Okay, an acre.
Builders acre.
Builders acre.
Builders acre.
In Somerville, what will we do with that, right?
Correct.
Okay?
Right.
And we're looking at putting an accessory apartment on that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's an acre if it's going to be attached or within the existing dwelling. If, if it's detached in a barn or whatever, then it needs to be 60,000 square feet. And I think we could look at reducing, you know, those lot sizes.
That's, for me, I think that's low hanging fruit.
Oh, isn't it?
Should be.
Easily attainable.
Yeah.
And I think the other thing that, the question keeps coming up, and did the other night too. I think, you know, there's still some confusion, so this would be part of the education. A lot of people still think that it needs to be a relative, like parents or children or something in there.
Right, right.
And we've never required that, our bylaw has always allowed it to be a rental unit for whomever to allow for additional income for the homeowner. The only requirement is that the homeowner, property owner has to live in either the accessory unit or the primary dwelling for six months of the year.
And there's one service, there's one service to...
And there's one service, right.
One medical service.
I've never understood that requirement.
Well, I kind of do, because what it does is it gets away from the whole concept of, you know, like having, not a B and B, but a, you know, what's the term I'm looking for? We'll go online and get a place for a couple of those.
Airbnb.
Airbnb, any, big, big cash, you know, turnover, sort of thing.
Right, right.
Because I, we don't, I don't think we want to do that, you know, with this approach.
No, that, yes, and that's an issue because when people start doing the Airbnbs, that's taking housing away from...
Yeah.
But don't forget too, I mean, for most of the town, two families are allowed as a matter of right in the AGR district.
Yes.
So the only, in the AGR district, well, leaving aside Plum Island, the overlay district there, but in the AGR district, the only time you need the special permit for accessory dwelling is if it's going to be detached, attached or allowed as a matter of right.
That's right.
And I think is it, is it the Parker River Residential, it doesn't allow two-family bike as a matter of right?
The Parker River Residential, I think, is only single family.
Yeah, so you would need it there, even if it was an attached structure.
So what's the minimum lot size for two family?
Uh, 60,000.
60,000.
60,000 if there's public water supply, 80,000 if it's on the well.
Yeah, so that does actually impact a lot of...
Yeah, that, you're right.
So, yeah, we go for, for a good chunk of it.
How many acres is that, Steve?
That is two acres and in Somerville.
That's fine.
But, yeah, but what should buy, but, you know, attainable, you know, very attainable.
Scott, let me ask you this, kind of in your wheelhouse, from a developer's point of view, does it make sense to, to build houses with accessory apartments in them? Or is it, is that not cost effective?
Well, interestingly, it's a hot topic in the apartment world. And California is probably the most progressive state in the union for really housing or for housing. Massachusetts is always, it's not too far behind. And they're looking at what California's doing. California recently, within the last, I'd say, 18 months, could be two years, you know, they now have a statute, you know, with the ADUs that you can literally get an ADU designed. And I'm like, not familiar with, like, single-family homes, just, just on an apartment site, you know, if you have, you know, land, if you have the opportunity to get four or five ADUs, you know, onto 5,000 feet, you know, just, right, you can get utilities to that, that space and, you know, water and sewer, of course. You could... You could bypass, you know, zoning and planning and go right for building room.
Go similar to 40B, bypass the local, right?
Yeah, and interestingly, where, you know, we're, before housing, you know, we have, the last time I looked, you know, 650 of these, you know, planned for 24 and 25 in Northern California and Southern California. And, I mean, there are, you know, conditions, but those conditions, you know, they're, I mean, these ADUs are really creative to the developers. I mean, it's big, like, worth it.
So, continuing along this conversation, are you familiar with what your place is named with their, their recent bylaw or statement if they're ADUs?
Maine?
Maine, yeah. I think they really opened up the door for ADUs, probably very similar as California. Some of the rate means things like they require to be sprinkled. And so folks that had, you know, probably actually have homes that, you know, are on a well or have, you know, town, but that would be, you know, an added cost that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, we've stopped putting these limitations on these things and it defeats what we're trying to do. So I think keeping it simple, you know, we're not gonna turn, you know, Byfield and Plum Island and Newbury into California with four or five on a, but if, I mean, you know, a lot of people just started thinking this way. That property just did this. Wow.
These, we're piloting, I think that it's just nine of them right now. Because the entitlements have been very slow because it's so new. And the building departments are saying, this has to go to plan. This, I mean, and our, you know, land use attorneys are saying, no, they don't, you know, and these are the reasons why. And it's just been, you know, very slow. But we're piloting nine with three different modular companies. And one of the restrictions is the size. I think it's, you know, it might be 450 square feet, you know. It's very micro. But I recently, you know, saw one of these things and they're like, wow. You know, they are the coolest things.
Yeah.
They're actually, they're really good looking. They're cute. You know, it's like a studio apartment and they're well done. They're built in a factory and they come out. You know, the developer, you know, does the utility work and the groundwork and gets the foundation in and they come out and, boom, gets hooked up in a week and you're good to go. And I put my parents in one of these things and like this.
I had a long discussion with one of the developers who did a subdivision in town, Coleman Road, Tom Zenko. And I was, we were talking about this, how do you make it easier, right? Like, A, there's zoning, but once the zoning is in place, like, how do you, what are the conditions such that anyone with a single family home across the region would actually be able to do it? Because of, like, it's complicated, right? Like, most of us don't really get how our septic system works. And, you know, so you have to have money to like hire, you know, someone to look at that and all of the things. Water, you know, does your, if you're on a private well, do you have enough water to like have another dwelling unit on your property? You may or may not know that. But that, I've seen that in California. Some of the housing committees in Ipswich were looking very carefully at that as a tool of like, if you could just, I was saying to Tom, if you could just package that up and deliver it across the region as like an option, like, hire me for this chunk of money. I will come in here, you can pick your, you know, one of five architectural designs, certain square footage, you know, one bedroom or two bedroom, whatever it is, and then boom, like, you got it? How many of us would do that? Like, I just think it would be a.
Well, they're doing it, they're doing it in Maine, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
So these things are rolling out and I'm curious as to whether Commonwealth, you know, is looking at this from a governor's perspective, because we're trying to do this.
She is proposing apparently an ADU law to make it sort of required through the state or allow it through the state statute.
It's part of the housing model that's been proposed.
What does it cost to build one of those, Scott? Those modular units?
You know, I should know that.
It depends.
Depends on the location.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it does depend on the location, but there's, I can get you that information.
Well, I'm just curious.
Just in a range.
Yeah.
I can get you that.
Maybe Amazon will come up with it, you know.
Yeah.
Just order online.
Well, Amazon actually, I think it was Amazon had tiny homes.
Are you kidding?
Oh, no, seriously, you could buy a tiny home. And that's actually, that was another thing I wanted to bring up, is right now, as far as I know, nobody in the Commonwealth, tiny homes are still not legal. I don't think there's any legislation that allows those.
Is it modular?
Not necessarily. I'm not sure, you know, they're separate. It's sort of like, are they trailers? Are they, you know, they're mobile.
Right, right.
So it's not, it's not something that falls easily within the building code or anything else.
So into ours is only, which doesn't allow mobile homes.
Yeah.
Just, this, you know, you looked at us, is this a mobile home? So maybe we should do some forward thinking here on our bylaw to allow for, if there's an XYZ company that has, you know, three or four vendors that have modular home configurations. It would be insulated appropriately for New England, bah, 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 bah. And they can do the tie-ins that we're talking about. It's, yeah, it's site work, it's site work.
I, that, I would think we would need to be careful with. As it is on the impetus of the homeowner, the landowner, you know, figure all that out, right? You know, our, you know, our responsibility is to provide the, you know, zoning. And if you, if we do that, and if we're very good with it, because we don't, Airbnb, not great, right? But if we could incentivize a homeowner or, you know, to do this for an over 55, provide, you know, incentives, you know, if they're tax breaks or whatever they are, you know, breaks in the building pyramid. It's just something, you know, I think we could, we could do all that, right?
On a local level.
Yeah. And, because I don't think the state, although it's, you know, very progressive, they're fairly slow. So I think, you know, we want to get ahead of it before then. And then once they came out, you know, with their stuff, you know, you enhance it or.
How much control do we have over what it looks like? People start putting up things that look like trailers, but they're not in fact trailers. Is that going to be allowed?
And right now, just referring back to our accessory apartment bylaw, it needs to be contextual. It needs to be compatible with the existing dwelling.
Oh, okay.
So, but, you know, again, the guidelines aren't, aren't.
There's some judgment called.
Yeah, there's some certain judgment. It's somewhat subjective.
So if we, you know, if we put some rigor behind the, you know, that, I think that's within the purview of the board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. The accessory is what, a third of the size of the existing structure?
Yeah, a third of the size of the existing structure, up to 1,000 square feet maximum. And the primary dwelling has to be no smaller than 1,600 square feet. So there, there are a bunch of parameters. There's, the ZBA has a little bit of wiggle room in terms of allowing slightly larger, depending again on kind of specific place. You know, somebody were doing modular construction, for example, to add on to their house and the modules are, you know, of a certain size to make a full module. It could potentially be a little bigger than 1,000 square feet.
So is the state in its plan of the ADU concept that they're working on, would that then pull into what they would then consider units that could be counted towards housing production? So we could hit our threshold?
I haven't seen anything about having those automatically being higher than the SHI.
I don't think automatically, but I think that's an option.
Or the intent.
For individual communities. I mean, it's currently an option. We could incentivize in some way that people who are building them would build them and apply, you know, have a deed restriction on the unit. Could get a little tricky because they're not sold separately. It would have to be on, as a rental unit.
And when you turn around, sell the property, when you turn around, sell the property, they'll have to continue.
Yes, so it would be a permanent deed, a favorable restriction on the deed.
Right. All right, this brings up a good point about the owners being on the homeowner to manage whatever the unit is, you know, to, if it's a rental property or it's, you know, all the, the homeowner has to take care of that, has to manage it, make sure that, if it's rent, they have to pay it. You know, it's, it's a little bit of work.
Yeah. And the deed would have the restriction that was like recorded at the registry. So any future owner would at least, you know, have that awareness. But the ongoing, like, being a landlord and.
Long run.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so you have to be willing to take.
Responsibility, huge. The benefits are huge as well.
Benefits, that's just it. For a family, the benefits are really significant.
Yeah.
So it's a way, a way to.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, if you, if you're a property owner and you reach the point where, you know, you need to have somebody there for full-time care that provides a unit for that to happen or for your kids to live, or they get the big house and you move into the small house. But going back to, you know, working with the CLA, I think the other thing, you know, there is a cost. And we're kind of talking about that, there's a cost to doing this. So, you know, would there be some possibility either through an affordable housing trust or something to, for homeowners who can't really afford to do it, but it would be beneficial for them? You know, any way to help fund their ability to construct these.
Right, to have an oversight. Not so much oversight, but a facility, administrator.
Well, that and also, you know, the actual funding for construction.
We have a trust.
We don't. That's, that was, that among all the housing production plan strategies that has come out kind of at the top of the list is one of the first things to do is create an affordable housing trust.
That would, that would be smart.
And the committee.
And the committee, yes.
The trust fund board who actually has all this on their plate. Everything we're talking about, outreach, education, working with the planning board on zoning amendments, keeping track of the housing model at the state level, like helping communicate that with the select board. Like having a commit, I mean, I was not able to attend Monday night because I was homesick. But I was really happy to hear that that community meeting really looked at developing a housing committee as one of the first strategies that town. Because, I mean, listen to everything we've just been talked about. For the last half hour, there's a lot of information, a lot of resources and support. But it, for a community to really move stuff forward, you need a dedicated group of people who care about it and are working on it. And then you also need, or ideally, there's a funding mechanism to support some of this work. Like, some of the housing trust funds I've seen have like, you know, down payment assistance program, like small loans to eligible homeowners that don't, you know, that zero interest loans. If there's a way to do that. I've also seen trust funds used for renovation support. Again, for eligible homeowners in town, you apply and you could get, you know, $20,000 to upgrade your, you know, energy system so that you're not, you know, just all the costs of heating your home through the, through the winter isn't going out the windows or whatever. So having, to my at this point, having funding available just opens the door to a lot of other strategies that the community can do to support individual families.
I'd be really curious to know what the tax implications are statewide and federal for this kind of a project for the homeowner. Are there, are there different tax implications?
I think that would have to come from the state. Either that or home rule legislation, but I don't think.
As we said, the state is gonna be far behind what's going on. So I think this conversation is very, very important and healthy conversation to continue. Not just to, you know, to end when we leave this room.
Well, I'm thinking maybe an affordable housing trust and inclusionary zoning maybe ought to be, developing those bylaws might be included in FY '25 goals.
Yeah.
Because we've talked about this briefly, formally, about next year. Because the inclusionary zoning and affordable housing trust kind of go hand in hand. Because with inclusionary zoning, if you, if you have the payment and loo provision in it, then you need an entity to manage that, those funds.
Yeah, would it come in helpful with some of the things that come before us in the next couple of years?
Yeah.
As a tool for us.
And we do have a goal in here. Goal number eight is to be an implementation of housing production plan actions.
Oh, so that's, that's probably broad enough to cover.
It's pretty, it's pretty broad. And if, for me, affordable housing trust committee or whatever is the top, that would really be the first one to start with.
Is that in there?
It's, it's not in there specifically, but that would be under the umbrella of goal, goal number eight. But we could also call that out.
Because it just seemed like too much to do this year with the MBTA communities stuff.
Yeah, and, and MBPC prepared a few handouts for us for the other night. The one on inclusionary zoning, you know, did specifically say it does require a lot of thought. And that's where we keep coming again.
You bump it to a wall.
Yeah, yeah, because you need to really carefully think about your trigger, how many units will trigger it. And it still needs to be a number that would make the project economically feasible. And then do you allow payment and loo or not? If you have the payment and loo, developers may choose to just provide the payment instead of building the units. So a lot of, a lot of things to think about.
There also, I think for Newbury, it's less likely we'll see a flood of large subdivision projects in the next, you know, one to three years. So it's, it's sort of, that inclusionary zoning bylaw is really important to get on the books. But the immediate, like, benefit of it, like, is, we may not see the benefit of it quickly. So it's a really important, you know, strategy to get going. And to think about, well, are there other, like, you know, the low hanging fruits to actually like create more housing more quickly? Maybe this ADU conversation is, you know, where that, that's a strategy that would provide benefits in the shorter term potentially. I do think, you know, even if you, even if there's in lieu payments for inclusionary zoning, then you have a funding source to, you know, consider some of these other types of options. So it's, it's a total win for a community to look at inclusionary zoning.
The other piece of that, if you, I mean, what I've seen is some of the communities that are just like so ahead of it, you know, they have, they have ESD goals, you know, the environmental, social, and governance goals, just like a corporation has. And, you know, they, they almost have a checklist, like, you know, are you guys familiar with LEED? So you got, you know, the platinum, gold, silver, you've got Energy Star, like that, everyone, you've got the, you've got the town's, you know, stretch energy code. But, you know, towns will have, more in California, but they'll have checklists. You know, so if you do this, check this box, you know, you get a little bit of an incentive, right? And if you, you know, if they're irrigating, you trip irrigation from something, you know, from rainwater, I mean, I mean, you get something. And that is, developers, you know, love to see that. Unless they're, you know, too crazy, right? But, you know, if they can check every box and they, they can become, whether it's, you know, LEED Platinum, believe it or not, that helps rent apartments. You know, the energy generations are really interested in.
Yeah.
You know, the energy generations are really interested in, um, that, they're looking at it. You know, is that community, uh...
Socially connected, right?
Yeah, uh, but on the other side, um, you know, it's good for us. You know, if, 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 uh, we're getting those types of, um, you know, builders and developers because they actually care versus some of the ones that want to come in and slam, you know, five hundred you're gonna deal, um, you know, down our throats, they're more thoughtful.
Right.
Right, that's, uh, for me, that's what I'd like to see, you know, thoughtful developers that want to do, you know, some affordable housing, but do some senior housing. Um, they want to, you know, build with, uh, you know, products that are, you know, better for, um, you know, the, the environment, um, that's some cool stuff. As long as it's accretive to them and we get what we want.
It's a tough one because it's costly, right? It's more expensive to build something that's environmentally correct. I mean, it's expensive.
Yeah, but it's, at the end of the day, for developers, it's a, it's a very, um, it's a very simple equation.
Very what?
A simple equation.
Okay.
You know, it's, um, you know, it's what the, what their capital costs are, the cost to, you know, build the deal.
Right.
Um, it's, it's what the rents are, um, that they're gonna get. Um, it's what the, uh, really the OpEx is, um, you know, the operating cost of the community over, you know, seven to 10 years. You know, a couple of other things, they throw it in the blender and it spins up, uh, spits out a, a yield on the investment, and, you know, if it works, um, a lot of times that's how they back into a land price. Right, so if we have, you know, this piece, I mean, what is it, 20 acres or something there? Right, and it could support, um, if it ends up getting passed, it could support, you know, a couple hundred units. Um, you know, before, uh, you know, the buyer just never goes to the seller and say, I'll give you this. You know, just do all this rigmarole and figure it out, you know? Uh, if they have a certain level of expertise, you know, within a day, they've got something mapped out, and they come back and they say, all right, 200 units, we'll give you, you know, forty thousand a unit, right? And that's how they come and, you know, get into the land cost. Now, it's not, it's a, it's a simple equation, okay, but it's a bit of a process.
Yeah.
Right, and it all has to be done very, very quickly.
In order for it to pay for itself.
Yeah, and everything's always bought, for the most part, on, um, you know, it's contingent, you know, so...
Contingent upon...
So many units, right? So if you get 200 units, you know, the price is X.
Getting the permitting for the X number of units.
Right, right. And the entitlements typically, on the average, for a developer, um, cost anywhere between, you know, five, six, or seven thousand dollars per unit.
Martha, I forgot what the breakout is of demographics, elderly, over 55, you know, middle age, whatever. Do we have, like, for Newberry, do we have something that...
Yeah, we do, that's the, the housing production plan demographic stuff that, um, MBPC has been preparing for us. And, um, I can't tell you off the top of my head what they are, but our, you know, our population is aging, so... Greatest percentage of our population is sixty-five and over.
I think, I think it was, it was approaching 50%.
Really?
Yeah, it's high, yeah, it's very high.
Wow.
And it's just going to continue, because no, nobody's going to move right now.
I've never seen a pie chart of that.
Yeah, and the younger ones, I can send you, I'll send you the, the slides.
Okay, did I just miss it, or was I asleep that day, or did you already hand it, hand it out?
No, no, that'd be, no, it was MBPC.
Yeah, it's been, um, the presentation.
Right, yeah.
It pops up once in a while, but, uh, it's easy to forget the exact figures, but I know we're an aging community.
Is it based on the census of, um, 2010 to 2020?
So we've got the numbers, uh, the graph shows, you know, 2010 to 2020 is actual, and then projections based on the trends that they're seeing, so up to 2040. And so, you know, 65 and over is going like this, and then, you know, 20 to 25 is going like that. That's only like, projection is that in 2040 it would be 7%, I think is the number. You know, and part of that, I see...
What would be 7%?
Set, um, the youngest, um, you know, 20 to 25 or whatever. The young, young kids who grew up here who can't afford to stay in town, so they're going, going elsewhere.
The elders, if they want to stay in town and down the sides, there's no place to go.
There's no place to go, so...
So the trend that has changed, is it, it used to be a 20-year cycle, but things would transition. That, that cycling is not happening anymore, because there's no place to go.
There's no place to go.
Once you hit that 20-year. So once the kids are, you know, maybe 25-year. So we have to, we have to figure something out that'll work in this town as it is right now.
Yeah, that's very important, and we zero in on what we're doing here, what we need to do.
You know, and it may not have been as transparent, you know, in 2010 through 2020, because, um, I mean, you could actually sell your house and, and move, uh, to another house and get a, you know, good interest rate, right? I mean, there was, but nobody's selling homes because, and the appreciation on the homes. It just seems the appreciation on the homes from COVID to now, uh, you know, that curve has become, you know, a lot steeper.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so you sell your home, where are you gonna go?
Well, that's it, I mean, you move into an apartment, you spend thirty thousand dollars a year, right, you know? More, more, you know, more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you can even find one.
So I like the, the three module companies that are doing these, you know, three different designings or whatever the... I mean, because to me, that's, that could fit so, so nicely.
It has such a diagram though, modular homes, diagram.
So, so remember when, um, governors did their, their two or three, uh, homes for their faculty?
Yes, up on Old Road, and they're beautiful.
They're modular homes, and they're great to look at. I mean, I would take one of those with the screens and porch, man, I love it.
Yeah, no, they're really, they're really cool, really cool. I can't remember what the company was, but they're, they're really cool.
Yeah, there is, there is a perception.
They're on Old Road, that goes off of Elm Street, it's in New Shays.
Modular, mobile, mobile modular, but I think...
Yes.
We need, we need different terminology.
Yeah, but I, I think it's getting, you know, better and it's...
Tiny house.
Tiny house.
Happy tiny house.
Yeah.
Accessory.
Yeah.
But, I don't know, maybe I'm misspoken, but, uh, the average size of, of one of these projects, if it's based on the size of the existing structure, I, they're gonna be, they could be substantially custom-sized.
A thousand square foot.
Yeah, as opposed to being a tiny house.
Right.
Well, the max is 1,000, right?
Max is 1,000, so if you have a 3,000 square foot home and it's, you know, 30%, then you can get the 1,000.
Which is a lot of room, for, you know, two people that don't have, you know, don't have to...
But if it's a 1,600 square foot home, we don't have so many of those left anymore, I don't think, but, you know, then it's gonna...
But part of the incentive could be, you know, if you did a 550, um, you know, square foot home, um, and you made it, you know, over 55, um, you know, maybe you'd get a break or something. You know, because a thousand, you know, square foot accessory dwelling, it's, it just feels like just another home. A lot to figure out there.
Cottage, like a cottage.
Yeah.
Cottage.
Yeah.
Or a cat or, or a camp. Maybe, maybe that's how it's promoted.
A camp?
No, cottage, a cottage, yeah. An accessory.
A cottage is a plamont.
Well, yeah, well, that's how it started.
That is how it started.
They flow.
Hell shit.
That's definitely a word that's used.
People buy hell shit, bomb it up to the old. I worked it like that, yeah.
It's a comfortable, friendly concept.
Yeah.
It's warm.
Yeah, I'll send her in, I just got a copy of a, a sort of 30-page thing that showed, like, all different kinds of, um, affordable dwelling developments of all kinds, like cottage homes, and cluster this, and AD that. It just was, like, pretty cool to just quickly scroll through, because they're all, it's photographs.
How many categories, sorry, Kristen, how many categories would they be?
Oh, I don't know, different towns and different states call things differently, but they're, sort of, all have a similarity, but, yeah. I mean, lot size is a really important thing to consider, because it really, anything we're talking about, like cottage, a cottage development, you just can't do if your lot, your minimum lot size is whatever, you know, it's, unless you, I guess, the High Road project was an example of condominium, condominium.
Condominium, yeah.
Undoising, a, a single lot, didn't have small lots, but...
You might just, I just would suggest maybe you go onto California's website, and they're the inside, and just, I mean, it's some interesting stuff I haven't researched, you know, I haven't looked at deeply, but...
Yeah.
Because whatever they do, or whatever they're doing, I would bet...
Fifteen years, that'll come to these.
No, it won't be that long, but Massachusetts, uh, they'll mirror that program to California's.
Yeah, and there's a little, in, in doing some of my architectural learning, it's, I've read about some of the multi-family housing, you know, out in California, and I know they're, they kind of look at the ADUs a little bit differently. It's been filled, but it's, uh, you know, that and, you know, cottage community, we were talking about this with, with Lauren and Kayla yesterday, also, you know, sort of cottage developments, and I think there is one in Salisbury, um, I was going to look up, and there's also, um, you know, potentially zoning for starter homes, it's a 40 Y district. I'm trying to get some more information about that as well.
That they have?
That...
Salisbury has a 40 Y?
Uh, they don't, as far as I know, they don't have a 40 Y, but, um, Lauren and Kayla have information.
Okay.
There's some really cool, um, stuff getting built in Texas, um, by a 3D printing company.
I've read about it.
Oh, you should just do 3D printing.
Talk about modular.
YouTube?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's unbelievable, it's just a machine that comes from concrete, it's just robotic.
Printing walls, that's...
Yeah, it's, I can't, like, Lennar is, uh, it's a huge, huge company. Yeah, that did, uh, a contract with these guys, 500, single-family, uh, four homes. So, it works, only one story, but, you know, it's small homes, you know, it's for people.
So now you've got my head spinning about costs. I mean, concrete, man, it's not gonna go anywhere. And you're gonna maintain a consistent temperature, right? And so, I mean, you know, heat includes, that makes a heck of a sense. You don't have to worry about mice on the walls, man.
No, but, uh, there's huge issues with concrete, um, around the world, because I think it's either nine or 11% of, you know, all the carbon emissions is, is relative to, you know...
Body energy.
Yeah, it's not good for the environment, but, uh, great for mice.
I'm sorry, I'm missing, I'm, I'm, I'm missing something here.
Yeah, me too.
The concrete?
Productions, it's the production.
There's concrete, you know, producing concrete, um, and, uh, putting it in place, uh, because that takes energy.
Right, right.
Um, you know, makes up, uh, I think it's either nine or 11%, I just read this.
Of car- carbon emissions, yeah, things that you wouldn't think about, there's a lot in terms of sort of embodied energy and all of these, you know, building products.
11% of everything, you know, in the world, that's amazing, that's a monster number.
It is a monster, but once it's done, it's done.
You're not reciting it, you're not repainting it, you're not, I mean...
So the, the...
It's not continuing to produce.
Correct, or use parts that are gonna continue to function.
So if you just, just said, okay, we have enough housing, let's stop, I mean, we'd be good, but...
The cycle keeps going, because we keep growing.
But there's other, um, I mean, they're on it. You know, we're starting to use, uh, these specialty plants that, uh, you know, um, make their concrete, you know, using flash, right, which takes down, you know, the carbon emissions by, you know, 30%. I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff out there that, uh, I just read, that, um, I just read there's, uh, there's an alternative to concrete now, and it's using steel shavings, right? But, it's, how do you make steel? That's like number two, right?
Right, I mean, if it's recycled, I guess that's, that would be okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So just kind of, because we're, we're out there at this level at the moment. I just wanted to share, yeah, at that, staying at that level for a second. I sat on a webinar last, yesterday afternoon about, um, trends, like, planning trends of the future, and there's a report that the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy does with the American Planning Association, annually to look at, like, forecasting planning trends, and it was fascinating, all of this stuff, like, like geoengineering, and, you know, climate, and, um, transportation, and housing. And I'll just, I'll share the link by email, but I just printed out, like, this one page to give you an example of the kinds of things that are being discussed on this, like, national, global. There, it's all the same, it's just one page. And there's some really interesting, like, they do, in this report, they do these scenarios of, like, if planning goes in this direction, it's like one of these sort of cross-charts. If planning goes, um, like, across the top, this is the futures of the home office. So will the changing workplace and housing availability, availability create a better or worse work-life balance? That was the, like, question, and then they do this, like, really great graphic chart. Across the top, it's like housing crisis worsens, cost of living increases. Across the bottom, affordable housing and mental health facilities are plentiful, and the cost of living has stabilized. And then down the sides, in-office work is required, everyone works a four-day week. Thought that was appropriate for Newberry to think about, um, versus fully remote work is the new normal. And again, like, even in the conversations about the town hall, this, this has all been floated, like, do we need, do we need a town hall, everyone's gonna be working remotely, like, do we, are we still on, just all of that? So it's really, in this report, um, I'll send this around too, but it, it's just fascinating to think about how, this is what we're talking about, right, like, future goals, like, the decisions we're all making as communities today are sort of forecasting these trends into the future, it was pretty fascinating. A lot of the stuff we're talking about, resiliency, energy, housing, yeah.
But if you're gonna build some of those modular homes with concrete, you better hope the concrete workers aren't working at home, they need to be at the, at the factory, you know?
Yeah.
So, some of this is geared towards, well, call, you know, like, collar jobs, or you're...
Yeah.
Otherwise, like, sitting in the desk.
Yeah, this is just about the office, yeah.
And we do need to take this, the need for industrial sector in this country and this economy.
Yeah.
And that's gonna cause some disjunction, so, I just want to be able to go to the sub shop and get a sandwich.
Right, yeah.
But...
Yeah, well, and all of that was kind of present on the, the Whittier vote this year that this region is needing to think more about, I think, it's really good.
Back, back to you, we flew very high from goal number six.
Yeah, yeah.
But, very good conversation, because, you know, this is what it's about. Thinking, thinking outside that box, and, uh, what would work and fit with what we have.
Yeah.
It would be great if Newberry could really hop on a train and ride it, you know, do something really spectacular. Present ideas that people would find so compelling, that they would want to, well, propose.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
So I, that's probably running a little on time, right? What are we at, 90 minutes?
Um, yeah, we had something there.
Yeah, um, I would just say that, uh, I mean, these, the goals are, um, a lot of goals.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot of work.
And, uh, you know, hats off to you, um, it's, uh...
But we don't have to do them all, right?
No, I mean, as you can see, we've carried a lot over from 24 to 25, you know, it's, it's a work in progress, but at least it's, you know, it's aspirational. A lot of these things are things that we're already working on, um, you know, like the, the trail things, the border to Boston, open space and things like that, so...
So they're, just sort of, I'm clear, the master plan is complete except for it's a lot. So it's going to be added to, it's going to be changed as things change, but we're considering that a done deal?
Yeah.
This is the master plan?
And the work, the work that we did is, is completed, so the next step really is to go on to, you know, the discussions about implementation.
Right, okay.
I don't think the plan will change, but there's an implementation action plan that's a partner with the plan.
Right.
That is a living document, constantly should be prioritized.
People need to understand that it can change. I mean, if things change, in Newbury, the master plan can change with it.
And the priorities, you know, as we were discussing before, the priorities in the implementation plan may change depending on, you know, what's happening at any, any given time. And then, well, you know, this plan is labeled twenty-three to thirty-five, but, you know, the anticipation is that, you know, we'll start looking at it again in around twenty-thirty for the next one. They're usually on ten-year cycles.
Right, so it's strategic in that it's about the how, how to get it done. That's what we need to work on, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the issues have been identified, so yes, so then it's how, how do we address these issues? So, and in what order do we address them?
Exactly, okay.
So can we jump to twenty, twenty-five for a second? Goals six and seven, which are kind of, you know, very, very closely tied together. Tell me where we're going with the flat grant and the process there and tying that into our vulnerability.
Kristin's looking into that one, I'll give you just a little background. The flat grant actually came out of discussions a couple of years ago between Mayor Reardon and Matt Hillman at Fish and Wildlife, and there was a grant opportunity for maintaining access to federal lands. And Newbury Port applied for the flat grant, we partnered with them with a focus on Plum Island, and it ties into the Plum Island sea level rise study that we did a few years ago because access was really identified as probably the first thing that we needed to look at. And Kristin's really taking the lead on this.
So when I started, which was a year ago, yesterday.
Congratulations.
A couple of weeks in, I, you know, oh, the flat grant has been awarded, and it was literally yesterday that that actual letter to proceed was received from the feds, so it's taken a whole year of, like, giving them the contact names and, you know, whatever. So it's, a federal grant is, has a lot of administration, but I've been working with the folks in Newbury Port and the Refuge, a sort of small team to just kind of track this and get it going. So literally, that'll be just kind of getting going. I have a meeting this afternoon about it. So it's a partnership, it's because Plum Island Turnpike, the majority of the road is actually in Newbury. Newbury Port is, you know, happy to have staff support from Newbury to kind of project manage, but essentially there'll be an RFP developed for that Plum Turnpike feasibility study. It, it will just be a study, it won't be a sort of extensive, you know, community discussion. It's just gonna be a technological study of the vulnerability of the turnpike and presenting a menu of sort of strategies that the community could then look at, discuss, work with the Refuge, work with Newbury Port to talk about what can we do? Can we, is there anything to do, whatever, what, how, how do we handle that into the future? So, so I'm happy to share, you know, the RFP, once it gets finalized, it'll be hiring a contractor, one of the engineering companies probably to do the next phase of the analysis.
And the federal grant will cover the entire.
And it's, yeah, it's actually a pretty cool program because I, my understanding is they just give the municipality the funding upfront. There's no match, there's no complicated tracking of staff time and all of that. And the reason that we're eligible is because of the refuge, you know, the federal lands that's at the end of Sunset Drive. That provides the eligibility for this access.
So Kristin, realistically, when would this happen?
The study?
No, the whole thing.
You mean, when would it be completed?
Yeah.
This, this, this grant-funded study, when will that be completed?
No, this whole, this whole turnpike.
So what's, so the study.
It's phase one.
Yes, so then after the study, I mean, I think we all have an idea what's gonna need to get done with the turnpike.
Yeah.
So that's probably a five to ten-year thing.
Ten years, okay, yeah.
It could be.
It's interesting, you know, how long these things are gonna take.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there'll be a lot of things to, to consider, you know, the feasibility of the different solutions and permitting, given that it's, you know, the Great Marsh and, and all of that sort of stuff, so, you know, as Kristin said, out of this study, hopefully we'll get a menu of options, there's some costs associated to them, and then it would be up to the communities to determine which option they wanna pursue.
No, I, I understand what Kristin was saying, I'm just saying, wouldn't it be nice to know how long this will take to be complete? I mean.
But we don't know, I guess we don't know what this is yet.
Until you get the study.
We won't know what to complete until we decide what we need to do, so that's why it's sort of, to your point, it's gonna be a while.
It's hard to, yeah.
It's not as easy as just.
You can't nail it down.
Build a bridge, getting a boat.
Help me out, what does FLAP stand for?
Federal Lands Access Program.
And can I dare ask what is awarded?
What?
Can I dare ask what has been awarded in this grant?
It's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is.
It's not much.
Wow, that's not money, but to do, to do a study.
For phase one, I think it's plenty because there has been quite a bit of work done previously, and we have quite a bit of knowledge about the vulnerabilities as well, so, but really pulling together this menu of like, specific things for the, for the three partners, the primary partners and all of the communities to, like, have as a tool to understand. I think that's, that's the real benefit of this.
Who's driving the process, do you know? Who's in charge of it moving forward?
It's, I mean, it's Newbury Port with Newbury and the Refuge, it's.
Who chooses the consultant?
The project team.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the administrative funding will go in and out of Newbury Port, so.
I'm gonna have to go out to bid for that.
Not sure, yes, I mean, I believe so.
I've been assuming that there's, there's an RFP.
Yeah, yes, yes. But I, engineering can fall in a slightly different category in terms of procurement, but I, there will be an RFP process and multiple bidders, hopefully.
You went to Boston, I saw it on the board of the Green River Commission on the sea level rise in Boston Harbor. I mean, they, they have a lot of this data already, all the way up to Southern Hampshire. I saw maps of where things were going, I saw science of where things were gonna be in fifty, you know, twenty-one hundred.
Yeah.
Wasn't pretty, okay, but.
Yeah.
Just saying that maybe.
The data is available, yeah.
Yeah, when we did our Plum Island Sea Level Rise project, there was a lot of, our consultant Ellie Baker pulled in a lot of data. She was looking at that as well, data from Woods Hole and all of that, so those are all great resources, thanks for mentioning that.
Newbury Port is actually putting some of the sea level rise data on the MindApp viewer, which other communities have done, and Newbury has had that Woods Hole sea level rise data for twenty-thirty, twenty-fifty, and twenty-seventy for, ever since the Great Marsh Adaptation Plan was done, which I think is five years ago now, so the data's being updated, but there is a lot of data available, and I think, back to, like, discussion of these goals, that's kind of one of the things that I also thought, you can tell I'm a big proponent of committees, which is if there's, if there's a committee thinking about this stuff on behalf of the town, and it's not just on, sort of, one or two of us to like, you know, we're the point people, but I think that's important to get a broader discussion and decision about, like, should we put, make that data, like, what are the tools to increase outreach and education about these discussions? How can we partner more directly with Newbury Port and, you know, Audubon and the Refuge about Plum Island and the MRBA? There's so many entities having these discussions, but how can Newbury as a municipality have a broader seat at the table? I think when there are, when there is an active municipal vulnerability committee, that's kind of a landing place for, you know, decisions and recommendations and, you know, advice to the select board or to the planning board or, it's easier. Like, I'm, right now I'm the Newbury representative for the Newbury Port Resiliency Committee, and a lot of those monthly meetings, we're talking about Plum Island, but I always sit there like the only Newbury voice in the room, sort of thinking, who do I go back with to sort of update and have this discussion? You know, the select board, of course, Martha, of course, but like, how do we have a broader community discussion about it? So I think that's why a lot of the goals that you see are talking about kind of re-engagement of committees, because I, I just think that's a good way to move stuff forward. You have, you have a group who's actually tracking that and having monthly meetings and, and just kind of thinking about short and long-term goals.
Right, as long as they have an idea of where they're going and how long it's gonna take to get there. Otherwise, this is an endless process, meetings can be endless processes.
I think it is endless, though. I mean, we're never gonna stop talking about climate resiliency.
Yeah, but we're gonna have to do something about it.
Yeah.
You know, what's the action? That's where I, that's where I always go, is this is great, let's go another year talking about it, let's do something.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I do like the collaboration.
I agree, the actions, yeah.
Collaborating, you know, having you on the, the committee, you know, as the town representative.
Yeah, they invited me, that was great, yeah.
And that's what we, I think the town, that's what we need and want, and get a little lonesome, you know, if you can't come back and, you know, just collaborate with a small group and, and talk about what you've heard and potentially get some ideas so you can bring those back, you know, to your next meeting.
Yeah, then you play a larger role in the group. You need to have a louder voice, because this is Newbury, we need to protect our interests.
Yeah, I think sometimes discussions come up, like, you know, how is Newbury thinking about water supply resiliency? Like, someone asked me that, and I was like, well, I know what I think. I know from my background, you know, concerns or questions or goals that I think the community needs to be working on, but I didn't, I didn't feel as though there was a good way to come back to the town and say, how are we thinking about water supply resiliency? Like, you know, other than getting on a select board agenda, but again, having a broader group of volunteers and members of the community who are discussing that would be helpful, I think, for the town to actually have a louder voice at the table. You know, then you could sort of say, well, these are the things we're thinking about, and this is what our master plan said, and here's some actions. Yeah, I think it exists. There's a lot of, you know, content and information and goals, but it's actually having the right vehicle for getting the action going.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But Kristin, you can also make stuff up.
Oh, yeah, you don't know what I say.
Get their attention, just tell a story.
Well, this depends on goal ten.
Yeah.
That is.
What, make stuff up?
Oh, no, no, not make stuff up. Just look at this list that we have already. It's like, how many hours do you get?
Well, that's why I put that goal in, because I was like, I'm spending time on this, this needs to be, like, stated. Because it is, it is timing, you know, I, I don't know how many hours per week, but it's, it, does the town think their staff should be spending time on this? Because that's important, you know, we, we are, to a degree, could we more, could we less? Yes, you know, it could be flexibility, but.
Well, thanks for doing all this, Kristin.
You're welcome, it's, it's planning, so I think it is really valuable and important, but I do, you know, I, I welcome thoughts about that because it is, there's a lot on here, Scott. How do you, you know, every day, what do you, what do you do?
One of the unique features of this community is it's tied to the environment because we're located. You know, if we were just, you know, outside of the city, nestled under, you know, an extension of one-twenty, it'd be very, very different as to what, you know, a lot of concerns are. We have the ocean, we have the marsh, we have the forest.
So we need a conservation agent, in addition to every one of us thinking about that. I think that's very clear in the master planning that's been done to finalize the plan that you all worked on before me, but I think that commitment to this place, the resources and the environment is across the board, a universal, you know, we need to hold on to that.
That could be the reputation, that could be what people talk about and get them talking.
And that's why people.
Where it's a place that cares, Newbury is a place that cares about the environment, about doing things right, about having a community that's attractive, well-managed, and where people are happy. And Kristin, you guys, Martha, you guys are great because Kristin loves to go to meetings. Martha loves to analyze everything, so it's a good team, you guys. Thanks for doing everything.
Will you help me out a little bit? Again, you went on the Plum Island Turnpike, is that where that FLAP grant applies? Or how extensive is it areaally? Because Plum Island Turnpike ends and now you're at the flooded Sunset Drive, you've got flooded Old Point Road. The center is flooded ahead of you, and there are other parts of Northern Boulevard in Newbury that where you'll get overwashed at times, so you stop seeing it.
Right.
And the Refuge itself can get overwashed, particularly down at the southern end, so I'm just wondering, how, how big a geographic area? And I haven't begun to mention the access to the Refuge off of one A down near the Raleigh border where the clambers will all there and do their clamming, or you can go for a beautiful walk across a marsh which will also be flooded down there, so how big an area is this looking at?
So the, that was actually, over this last year, that was specifying, that exact question was something that was discussed. And currently, because they were actually asking us for GPS coordinates for this extent of the study, so it's from the start of Plum Island Turnpike, which is, is it Rolfe Lane?
Ocean Ave.
Ocean Ave intersection, so that section is Newbury Port and then all the way to the beach. So we actually extended it onto Plum Island Boulevard, all the way to the town beach, and then Sunset Drive to the Refuge gatehouse. So unfortunately, not Old Point Road, not Northern Boulevard, but we did extend Plum Island Boulevard in the scope.
My question, if you take a left at Ocean Boulevard as opposed to going onto the island, you take a left and go on Water Street, which will also be flooded when you've got a, the wind coming in the right way with the spring tide.
Yeah.
So in the ten years it's gonna take to get all this done, sea level's gonna rise sixteen feet, it's gonna be like underwater.
And that is a concern.
But the projections are being modeled, so that will be.
That, yeah, it's a scary thing.
Won't be, it won't be sixteen feet, I guarantee you that.
But, but, but.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be higher than it is today.
It's going to be shocking because it's gonna be faster than people think. It's already been faster than. Things are getting flooded we never saw flooded before.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, this last storm really goes to that. Steve and I were talking about that.
Yeah.
It's not just the King Tide or the Norris or their other events.
But I'll say, my neighbor, my neighbors now departed this earth, who were around at Wizard of Seventy-Eight, had described to me flooding conditions in my neighborhood on Fourteenth Street that were more severe than what we saw in the storm. So, we ain't seen nothing yet.
No kidding?
I was just reading, we gotta go to PT.
What he has at the same time I do. We need to have it at the same time I do, you know, it's gonna be.
Yeah, I already sent a message to those.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my guy's gonna be furious.
Well, this has been a wonderful discussion, I have a sense we could spend another two hours here, but, uh, probably, if we've got some commitments, is it appropriate to wrap things up?
We actually have a meeting here at eleven, so.
All right, we're out of here.
Well, then, would anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I meant for you to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's your name, it's where it is.